It's time to start our public hearings. We have several public hearings here this evening that we're going to talk about and to discuss. And if you're unfamiliar, we have now got a microphone system that we hope to better serve the public and to so you can hear and listen. Also, our camera system according to Cypher Tech will be up and running in about two weeks. There was a part that didn't come in that will be in actually in the next couple of days according to them, but pretty much guaranteed in two weeks would be up and running. So you'll be able to in two weeks be able to live stream the meetings at www.cityoflivingston.net and you'll be able to do that on demand and watch any of the meetings that you would that you would like to watch. So we asked if anyone wants to speak that they come to the podium, announce their name, and push the button at the podium to be able so everyone that can hear you, it's a fifty-fifty on if our speakers are working and the ceilings are not, some say they are, some say they're not, but maybe this will be a good opportunity to test it. So that's the process that we have. Anyone that speaks will have three minutes and we're going to try to or we will allow each person to speak if they cease fit to speak, but we're going to hold you to the three-minute time limit as the city council meeting will start at six or therefore shortly after. So that's where we are. Again, want to welcome you here this evening. Glad to see that folks here are interested about our community. So first is the second reading on ordinance twenty nineteen dash two dash one resoning the Hicks property. This is a public hearing. So if anyone here is for the second reading on twenty nineteen dash two dash one resoning the Hicks property from C three to R one. Is anyone here for that? Darius, have you had any calls on this? And I know this has went through the planning commission, has it?
Yes, no, I haven't. No, I haven't had any call.
Again, this is the rezoning of the twenty nineteen dash two dash one speaking Hicks property located one oh five Roberts Street. Anyone here to discuss that? Okay. If not, we'll move on to the ordinance twenty nineteen dash two dash two. An ordinance to amend town thirteen Livingston Municipal Code of Creating Property Maintenance Board. On the first reading, the property maintenance board was created with Angela Dixon, Randall Alsop, Daniel Elder, Barbie Roberts, Matilda Speck, Mitchell White, and Ken Dotson. And that was established and the rules engagements was went over. Does any board members have any inspection on that? Ordinance amending the twenty nineteen dash two dash three ordinance amending of the this is the next ordinance, amending the Livingston Municipal Code Title Eight Alcohol and Beverage to Allow the Consumption of Alcohol Beverage to Central Park and Other Public Locations. This is a public hearing. If anyone would like to.
Mr. Mayor, would you like to speak to councilman?
Yes, sir. As if you, Mr. Coquelin, if you will push the button there.
Push it.
Okay, sorry, push. No? Okay, there you go. And like anyone that wants to speak after Mr. Coquelin, you will have three minutes to talk and anyone who wants to talk can do that. Of course. Yeah, I'm sorry.
My name is John Coquelin and I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak for the city council. I am here in regards to this ordinance that will permit the consumption of alcohol at the Central Park. The Central Park in Livingston has been provided for the people of Livingston and for the county. Very nice park. It is a place to be enjoyed by families. Myself, my grandkids have enjoyed time in the city park. When it was constructed, we were under the impression, I was in way, that it was to be used for a family-oriented events, which is something that is greatly needed in our community. But with this ordinance, I'm afraid that the family aspect of park will be lost. It seems to me that there are those who are obsessed with making alcohol available to as many people as it possibly can. It is also very apparent that those who want to make it more available are those who do not really have to deal with the effects of alcohol. They do not have to counsel a wife whose husband is an alcoholic. They do not have to console a family that has lost a loved one due to an accident by a drunk driver. They've never had to sit with a child and talk to them about a mother or a father who has abused them because of alcohol. They do not have, they've never faced these things, never had to deal with these on a personal level. They may have never even had to face them in a personal way. They do only see what they call as benefits of alcohol, to which I say that there are The Bible tells us very plainly that the book of Proverbs, chapter twenty, verse one, that wine is a marker, strong drink is raging, and whosoever is deceived about it is not wise. This is saying that it is an unwise thing to have anything to do with alcohol. The Bible also tells us in the book of Proverbs, chapter thirty-one, verses four and five. It says, "It is not for kings, O Lemiel, it is not for kings to drink wine, nor for princesses to drink, lest they drink and forget the law and pervert judgment of any of the afflicted." This verse is telling us that it's a dangerous thing when those who are in position of authority are consuming and are advocating the consumption of alcohol because it perverts their judgment and it perverts the law itself. It also says in the book of Habakkuk, chapter two, verse five. It says, "Woe unto them that give it to his neighbor drink, and puteth thy bottle to him and maketh him drunken." The word woe in the Bible is a very stark, strong word. It means it is the word of judgment. It says, "Woe unto them that give it to his neighbor drink." I feel that this ordinance, if it passes, is doing just that. It's making alcohol available to our neighbors. God said, "Woe. I don't see anything good that can come from that before for our city, for our community, and certainly for our families and the children that are going to be affected by it."
Mr. Coquelin, thank you. We've read it for minutes and thirty seconds. We're going to give other folks an ample time to sleep as well. That's the time you're holding.
Mr. Coquelin, just to come back to the question. Thank you for being here and I appreciate your thoughts. I do have a question for you. What is it? What do you? How do you understand this ordinance? What is it? How do you see this ordinance working? Describe to me how you perceive this ordinance.
I appreciate this ordinance making alcohol. Consumption is the word that's used in the ordinance. Making the alcohol consumption available at the city park and circumvents. And another part of ordinance that really bothers me is the word it says, "and other public locations of special events." That bothers me because that means that it goes beyond the Central Park. It goes to the ballpark.
Are you, excuse me, but are you familiar with the fact that this is only to allow alcohol to be served at a special event when the park has been rented out by that group?
I understand that. I understand that.
Okay. Just want to make sure that's the.
My position, Councilman, is this. There is no good that ever comes out of alcohol. When we as a city, when we as a legislative body allows that to be given out, we are setting ourselves up for to be in a position to cause damage. We are giving people the opportunity to consume alcohol and then get on our roads. We're giving them permission to consume alcohol and go home and do things that they wouldn't do if they wasn't. That's my concern.
Right.
That's my position.
Right. I respect that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Also, one, just one other fact, one other comment. You stated in your statement that those that are councilmen, people in position, and I'm assuming you're referring to some of us, have never had to, and you use that repeatedly, have never had to deal with a wife, a family member, anyone that's been, you know, encountered the problems associated with alcohol or alcoholism. All right. I just want to set the record straight. I've had very personal, very close-up, very firsthand experience with AA, Al-Anon, alcohol, alcoholism in my family. All right? So I just want to correct the perception that there are some of us who have actually dealt with it on a firsthand basis.
And I'm sorry to make that.
That's okay. I just, I want to, I want to clear that that's not a correct assumption.
Well, I have as well. Okay, in a personal level, not just as a pastor, but in a personal.
Sure.
Thank you. Is there anyone else ordinance amending the Livingston Municipal Code Title Eight Alcohol and Beverage to Allow Consumption of Alcohol Beverage to Central Park and Other Public Locations? Yes, sir.
My name's Randy Neff and what I'm understanding is being a family park and this was mentioned before, I'm concerned about that going on too as far as the baseball fields and that. If they have a special event, how are we going to stop any children playing in the playground? I guess that's my biggest question. How's it going to be controlled? It's going to stay in there, nobody else can come in and out. The other thing I have is, is after it's done and whatever special event it was, they're going to be on the roads. And I know as far as the police force, it's going to be more jobs on them. So that and the safety factor of coming out, they're going to be on the roads. The biggest concern I have is, again, it's a family park, is there going to be any children there? And that's why I guess my biggest concern is that. And how often is this going to happen? Are we going to make any money? I'm not in the city, but is the city going to be making any money off of this special event? Who's going to be controlling the alcohol? Is it going to be carded? Is there going to be underage drinking? Who's going to control that? Are we going to have our police force there or are we going to go by whoever's holding it, hold them to a standard of it? So but my, my opinion or vote, I guess you'd want to say, is I'm against it. I don't want to see no alcohol brought more back in. I know, Mayor, we've talked, talked about having some more finer restaurants brought in. I guess that would be my, or the other thing, we haven't seen that. But alcohol hasn't brought us anything. I don't see it as a benefit.
Thank you, Mr. Neff. Thank you very much. Yeah, well, I think Ray, Mr. Coquelin, have a statement. Do you have a statement or anything, Ray? Yeah, I think he will answer some of Mr. Neff's questions.
So Ray Evans, two oh one North Church Street and chairman of the Livingston Downtown Advilization Committee, probably some clarification. This ordinance allows, would allow, if this body passed, the serving and consumption of alcoholic beverages at special events on them. By definition, a special event is when some entity would rent the entire park. So the entire park is closed except for that, that event. You can have special events without serving alcoholic beverage. So same thing would follow with if, if some organization wanted to rent, own the city the entire park for a day or a portion of the day, they can index that. The rental rate, and I think you have that on your agenda later, the rental rate is three hundred dollars a day plus depending on whether you're using state and opposite division of policy. If the host of the special event also wants to serve alcoholic beverages, there's an additional one hundred dollar permit fee for that. They have to go before the board, the beer board, and for the special permit in order to be able to do that. No one would be allowed inside the park at a special event that is underage. So you'll be carded, you'll be, you'll have tags around your arm to make sure that that's controlled and that no one underages in the park while the alcoholic beverages are being served. Anticipation is that this might happen once or twice a year as we see it now. And there is certainly, you know, one, one current event that has asked to, to have that So the, and, and, you know, the committee has, we thought that this had the same concerns of having children in the park at the same time. So this, by the fact that, that the entire facility is being rented and controlled and they'll only be one way in and one way out and IDs will be checked as you come in and come out. Also, the anticipation would likely be that as you come in, you'll get a couple of tickets and you, and if you want to be served a beverage, you'll take that ticket and, and get served your beverage. You can't bring your own beer into the park. You can't buy beer in the park. So this would be a special event that simply had the alcoholic beverages available for that service.
So just to be clear, Ray, this ordinance is, does not allow John Q., Jen Q., taxpayer to get a six-pack of beer and head down to the park?
Absolutely not. It would be a violation of the policies that this board has set for the park.
Yeah, or a glass of bottled wine at any time. You just simply can't do that. Whiskey or anything of that nature is not allowed. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Mr. Evans, did you also state that no children or minors would be allowed in the park during a special event that would be having alcohol served?
That's correct. Everyone inside the park during the special event serving alcohol has to be of legal drinking.
Okay. Is this a, an ordinance that has been modeled after what the city of Coquelin has done?
Exactly.
Okay. And my understanding is that this body prior to my coming on last summer had developed a very thorough package of very detailed explanations who can rent the park, i.e. you could rent partial areas of the park, i.e. the picnic shelter, or you could rent the entire facility for your organization. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And it has all the rental rates described in here if I wanted to rent the entire park?
Yes, sir.
And if I rent the entire park, then no one else is allowed in the pavilion or in the playground area. Is that right?
That's correct. Okay, only, only those that are invited. Now, you know, you could rent the entire park and, and yourself open it to the public.
Sure. Okay. So for example, my company, Midstate Construction, could theoretically rent the entire park, let's say in the month of July, for our company annual party or annual picnic, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And if I chose then to serve beer during that function, I could do that after I go to the beer board, after I get the special permits and pay the special fees, only the invited guests that are there for my company picnic would be allowed in. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
I don't know that that is correct. If I'm reading what we're reading, it says special event permits may only be issued to bona fide charitable nonprofit or political organizations. So we didn't.
Good point. Good point.
Okay, so that would only be for charitable organizations or what?
It reads, "Special event permits may only be issued to bona fide charitable, non-profitable or political organizations as defined in Tennessee Code Amended seven dash four dash one oh two."
Okay, all right, so that.
That is correct, and I stand corrected.
That means my company couldn't rent it, but the.
You could rent it. You just couldn't serve.
I just couldn't serve alcohol, right. But it is correct that one of those types of organizations can rent the entire park.
Correct.
Okay, and it's closed to other individuals during that rental period. Okay, so it's my understanding that last summer maybe or early fall, there was a church group perhaps or some religious affiliated group that rented the entire park for like a week for some type of revival. Is that correct?
I think that's correct.
Okay.
Two days.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's been changed. You can only rent it for a maximum of two days. So, so during that period that that group, religious affiliated group, has rented the entire park, if I'm not, if I'm not asked to attend or invited, I don't have any say in what they do while they've rented that park, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Ray, have a question.
Good point.
You said a private group can rent it and only certain ages are it. What if that group and the people attending has their children with them? Are they not going to be allowed there or will they, at their discretion, be with their parents?
Any of them that serves alcoholic beverages, everyone in attendance has to be of legal drinking.
Now, you referred to the ticket thing. Is that why, and I've been asked this, is that why the newcomers party is coming up with the chambers while we're passing this in order for them to use it so that they can have the, the wine and liquor down there instead of at the chamber and that way the kids, kids won't be in attendance? You just said it'll only be adults. Is that why it's going to be a ticket only? You have to get your ticket at the chamber for the newcomers?
I think you best understood what I said about tickets. It's not an uncommon thing in an event like this.
Correct.
To limit the number of beverages that someone can consume to give them a ticket or two or three, whatever the number would be. And that way you limit the number of tickets any individual has and therefore the number of drinks that any individual has. And, you know, a ticket is just, you know, a roll of ticket certificates, common for events of various sorts. I don't go about the chamber and I don't know about the, the.
In your scenario, you would redeem a ticket or eight beverages.
Correct.
Thank you. Mr. Evans, I have another question or two. My understanding is that the city of Coquelin has an event maybe once or twice a year. One event that I'm familiar with is called Wine on the West Side. In that event, the way I understand it, it's set up similar to the way you've described it. There's a gated area. It's only accessible from one secure gated area. There are individuals there checking IDs. You get an armed man and then vendors, restaurants, et cetera, can serve alcohol at that event. Is that how you're describing the use of our Central Park if there's a special event where the entire park is rented out, whereas at that particular one entrance gate, whatever, there'll be people there checking identifications, making certain that they're legal age, either receiving an armed man or some other form of identification showing that they're of legal age. Is that correct?
Sure, well, so let me, let me give you a similar example that I am familiar with and that is a, a similar event in Coquelin called Blues and Brews. And that occurs annually at Dawgwood Park. The, the area that is, is for the event is, is holding off and secure. To get in, there's probably four or five people that are actually checking your ID and making sure that you're qualified and giving you the bands and that sort of thing. There's an area that, that craft beer is served, that's for vendors, and there's an area for music. And so, but again, it's, it's a public park that, that once a year for this particular event is closed to the public except for, and by the way, that event is actually sponsored by Public Television Station in Coquelin.
Is there a play area in the Dawgwood Park as it's closed off to the stairs in that Blues and Brews?
The area that Blues and Brews occurs, there was no play area within that, that part of Dawgwood Park. It was the amphitheater and some area suggestions to the amphitheater.
Somebody clarify that we can't close our park where the picnic tables and the bathroom stuff completely aren't.
Yes, that would be a problem.
There is a gate there?
Yes, yes.
Is that correct? Okay.
I'm not certain.
Well, I started saying some.
There's a large double gate thing.
For, for you go in for the picnic tables and the rear entrance.
Right.
So there, there can be blocked out.
Michael Evans, is that correct? You're.
That's correct. It can be shut off. Thank you.
So then, Mr. Evans, if I've rented the entire park, excuse me. So if I've rented the entire, if I've rented the entire park, done my due diligence, paid the fees, my group has decided that they would like to serve beer or wine, and we have, you know, jumped through all the hoops, provided all the certificates of insurance, et cetera, then the city, if this is passed, would allow that group to serve the alcohol to those people who are in attendance. No one else can get in that park during that time. Is that correct?
And if the host is a qualified entity to, to do so.
Yes, sir. Okay. I'm going to have another question. You'll be in real long term.
Well, for the record, if we've got somebody else, he's went over his three minutes.
To clarify, then he only went over his three minutes because we were asking questions. His time off the floor was over in two minutes and fifty seconds.
Well, I just want to make a general comment. There've been a lot of people who've asked me about this ordinance before tonight's meeting. And there are a number of people in our community who, in my opinion, have valid concerns. But I believe that there's been a misperception to a great number of those people as I've asked them to describe to me what they perceive the ordinance to be about. As I've heard many, many times, they've said, "Well, it's to allow the park to, you know, to serve beer and wine and to sell beer and wine." Well, that's really not accurate at all. All right? And so hopefully tonight's held to play by, it would only allow alcoholic beverage to be served if some entity that qualifies, as Ken described, has the entire park rented out. All right? Like I said, this body made the decision early on that this park would be available to families. It will be available to groups to rent out the entire park. Whether you're a religious affiliated organization or a civic group, what you do in that park is really your business. If you jump through all the hoops and do all the due diligence and provide all the certificates of insurance, then that park is your space to use during that period that you've rented it out. So I just wanted to make that statement to clarify for those who've. So, I'm just going to make that statement to clarify for those who've asked me, isn't this going to allow the city just to go in the business of selling alcohol in our city park? That is absolutely not correct. I would, I don't think this, that would even come before this body. Thanks.
Thank you.
Mr. May, could I ask the body a question? I mentioned a moment ago that one part of this amendment that really bothers me is not, is the fact that it stipulates the C, the Central Park. But it also says, "and other public locations for special events." Would you, as a body, first of all, consider striking that part of that amendment out and put a period behind park so that these events could only be held at the Central Park? And give us the, the, at least the consolation of real, of thinking and believing that we don't have to worry about the ballpark, we don't have to worry about the park run by the high school. Would you consider doing that? Because that's one thing that I'm, I looked at this, it's going to spread from Central Park. There's going to be, somebody's going to want to host a softball tournament over here at the ballpark, and it's going to be sponsored by Budweiser or whatever. And they're going to want to do the same thing. I just hate to see, see property opened up like that. So, would you consider striking that part of the amendment out at this time so that we would have a consolation and understanding, only Central Park? That's my question.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Is there anyone else here that wants to discuss twenty nineteen, uh, two thousand, twenty nineteen dash two dash three?
Mr. Mayor, may I?
Yes, sir.
My name is Adam Neff. I'm actually a resident of the city of Cookville. I was, I was raised here in Auburn County. I want to make one thing specifically clear. I am here as a member of Grace Baptist Church, nothing else, nothing more other than that. One of the things that was mentioned as well is the, the tickets by the gentleman before me. I teach twelve, fourteen-year-olds in Sunday school, and I consider every single one of them my kids. One thing that I've noticed is peer pressure. And I can promise you one thing, that whenever you get a bunch of people together drinking, more alcohol will be consumed than they should be. And tickets can be changed hands very, very easily, to the point that you can have somebody that started out with two and end up with six or seven by the end of the night. So, I, I'm not sure how that can be regulated, if there's a way by law to do so. But also, if I could, Auburn, Coleman as well, it would only be for the park to be completely rented out. Is that correct? Because I know in the, in the document itself, it said that you could rent out certain portions. So, if I could address that question as well, sir.
That's the way I understand it, yes. There are various, there are various options to rent out our park. One is to rent the entire space, including, you know, the playground area, the picnic shelters, and the stage and the walk, the entire space. The way I understand it, only in that scenario of a rental is would, is the scenario when alcoholic beverages could be served. Is that correct, Mr. Evans?
Understood. I would like to say two more things, and then I'll donate my time back to the council itself. One thing as well, that they would have to pay to get the certain permits for alcohol to be served. Is, I, I believe I'm correct in that. There's a lot of damage that's done by alcohol, and I'm sure every single person on this council can testify to that in some form or fashion. With that being said, is the money that we're going to make as a city worth the damage that's going to be done? Second of all, when things happen, too much alcohol is consumed, many times, people act out. I've seen that on a personal level as well, to the point that damage will be done to city property that is absolutely beautiful, in my opinion. And I would not want to see damage as well, but also the lives of people of Livingston. I will address more thing, and I will donate my time to the council. The comment was made as well, that this is things that Cookville does. I live in Cookville, and at least once a week, I hear gunshots in my home. And I'm five minutes from Tennessee Tech. I do not want to see Livingston become Cookville. We are not Cookville. And I hope and pray we never become that. I love Livingston. I will give my life for Livingston. And I will stand for that each and every single day. I appreciate the time that you've given me to speak. And I do hope that my questions would be addressed, and to the point that the money that we make off of this, is it truly worth it?
Thank you, Mr. Evans.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak during this public hearing, this ordinance?
Mr. Mayor, I have a question, and I'll have to come back to the.
Yeah, come on.
My name's Randy Neff. Again, I have a, I have a question to address, not for council, but I guess, if, if the special event is going to be held and they got the whole park, who is going to release, who overdrinks possibly? Or pass through anything through the fencing? Is the special event people going to have security guards, I guess is what, to oversee all that? And the same aspect is, is who's going to hold them to it on the, the age that comes in there? Are they going to card everybody? But is anything going to get passed through? Is, are, are there going to be security? I guess is what I want to say about that.
I can answer that. The Livingston Police Department will be at every event, whether it's special event or non-special event. And, and will be out in force. If anyone gets out of hand, they'll deal with the Livingston Police Department. If anybody tries to smuggle in anything or that, they will deal with the Livingston Police Department accordingly.
Okay, good. The other question I guess want to add to that is, is the special events, is there going to be a size limit? Is there a number limit to the amount of people that is in there? I guess what I'm saying is, can we have a bond rule? You know, I don't want to see a bond.
Just one thing, if I want to consider doing, is getting, picking up a copy of this rental agreement. A lot of the details that are asked in there are in it.
How long is, it's two hundred people. Thank you. Thank you. There is another ordinance, twenty nineteen dash two dash four, is the ordinance to amend chapter one, Title thirteen, Livingston Municipal Code related to the property maintenance regulations. Is there anyone here that'd like to discuss that? It's the ordinance to amend chapter one, Title thirteen, Livingston Municipal Code related to the property maintenance of beverages. Anyone?
Do you have a copy of that? Do you have a copy of that? I haven't seen one.
I'll get you a copy. I don't, I got my copies, all I got, Randy. But I'll, I'll try to get you.
Mr. Mayor, while we're waiting.
Mr. Rebecca, pick your. Yes.
Okay. While we're waiting, I want to clarify something. I had a couple of citizens in the city ask me about smoke in this thirteen dash one oh three related to smoke coming out of their wood stove that they used to heat their house. Was that going to be a violation? And so, I wanted to just read this real clear. Again, I think there's a lot of misperception, and oftentimes, that comes when you don't really have all full, complete story. And one thing I am going to ask the mayor to do is to post all of our city maintenance property codes on the city websites, so we need to go in there and read them all at any time. But as it relates to smoke, it, the, the policy says that it shall be unlawful for any person to permit or cause the escape of such quantities of dead smoke or gas as to be detrimental to or endanger the health, comfort, and safety of the public or so as to cause or have Tennessee to cause injury or damage to property. This is not related to smoke coming out of your home wood stove. And again, this is a, this is also an ordinance that's been on the books for, I'm sure, over fifty years. That hasn't changed at all.
Is there anyone else here to discuss any of these matters? We want, for everyone, and we'll make sure that everyone had an opportunity to discuss any of these matters. If not, we will, we will take five minutes, and then we'll call them in. Five minutes.